They said they'd give it back to you. They did.
We call to order the October 15th, 2012, meeting of the Robertson County Commission. And at the beginning of the meeting, I'll make a statement that for the first time in our history, this meeting is being carried live around the world on the World Wide Web at www.northofnashville.com. So if you'd like to see that, people are watching it live now around the world, and you can watch it later in its archive forum. So at this time, I want to ask Sheriff Holt if he'll come give the invocation, be followed by the pledge to the flag. Please stand.
Join me in prayer. Well gracious heaven, the Father, thank you, Lord, for providing us the opportunity to have another day in your wonderful kingdom here on earth. Lord, I just pray for each and every individual here, pray for the commissioners as they listen, and give them the ability to discern what it is you would have them do that would honor you, the decision that they make to take care of the citizens of this county and this state, that things, whatever they say and whatever they do, will be in your honor, bring glory to your house. Dear the Father, be with each and every one of these individuals that are here tonight, to the audience and those that may be listening around the world. Thank you again for affording us the opportunity to come and live in a country where we can make these type of decisions in a democratic form, be with each one of us as this occurs tonight. Christ's name, amen.
Let's allegiance to the pride of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mister Jones, if you'll press yes and confirm, you will be enrolled in the voting system. There being all 24 members present, I declare that we do have a forum. You have in your packet the minutes from the September meeting. What's your pleasure? Have a motion for approval, and a second by Commissioner, approval by Commissioner De Oriya, and a second by Commissioner Bill Gray. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. So they are approved. Chair would like to remind the Commission of the passing of former County Commissioner Prince Green, who also served on the Highway Commission for some time, and Prince was here for a long time, and served this community well, was always eager to serve in any capacity. In fact, he was currently serving on our regional solid waste board. So we, our sympathy goes out to his family at the time of his passing. And I'm going to ask Denise Routson if she'll come up, and Eric, you need to come with her if you don't mind. Come on up here. You let somebody else take pictures. Every time one of our own goes out in the big wide world and does something extraordinary, we like to remember them or think about them, and Denise has done something very extraordinary. Of course, most of you know Denise, she's worked in the sheriff's office for a number of years, but quite recently, she was named Tennessee 4-H Volunteer of the Year. And to many of you, like me, are very close to 4-H, to the program, to the kids that have been in the program and the lives that it's touched, including my own, in a very real way, and so I have a special place in my heart for 4-H, and obviously, 4-H has a very special place in their hearts for Denise. So because of that, it is fitting that we should recognize Denise Routson for her dedicated service to Robertson County 4-H for 22 years, and her accomplishment recently of being named Tennessee State 4-H Volunteer of the Year, whereas Denise has served as a selfless volunteer, mentor, club leader, camp leader in Robertson County, and where it is the desire of the people who have benefited from her years of service and devotion to honor her on this special occasion. So therefore, I, Howard Bradley, as county mayor, on behalf of all the citizens of Robertson County, take great pleasure in proclaiming tomorrow, Tuesday, October 16th, 2012, as Denise Routson Day in Robertson County, and extend our best wishes for a happy and fulfilling retirement. Fulfilling retirement?
Wow, I was surprised.
Jody?
Y'all, for this thing.
I was telling you something, anyway. We're so proud of what you've done, and we're so proud of you.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Congratulations. Maybe you won't have to retire.
Yeah. I'll just pretend.
Chair had asked Ms. Kathy Lowe from Emergency 911 to come and address questions that you may have regarding the story that you saw in The Times last week. I'm going to ask for a motion and a second to make Ms. Lowe remember, made by Commissioner Jones, and a second by Commissioner Adcock. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, no. So you all are members of this body, so please give us the information that you can, Ms. Kathy.
Mayor Bradley, ladies and gentlemen of the Commission and all of the people in the audience, you bear with me, I'm not a public speaker, I'm just going to be up here and do the best I can. Let me just give you a brief history of the 911 Board. It started in 1986 when the County Commission appointed a seven-member Board, and the referendum was done in 1986 for that. In 1992, a resolution was established to add two new Board members, which were strictly to come from the law enforcement agencies within Robertson County. My main reason for tonight is to discuss the 911 mapping for the new Next Generation 911 that is being put out countywide, statewide, and nationwide. We started the mapping here within this county in April of 2012. The Next Generation, the mapping program that we received came from the state OIR-GIS department. We have to coincide with everything with the state OIR department to make this work within county to county. In doing so, we have a deadline, which the state sent to us with the mapping to upgrade, with anomalies which are called errors, and we have to correct those, they all have to be corrected by September, no, excuse me, March of 2013. Meanwhile, when we, Didi Perry, my assistant, she's the one that does the mapping, and she does all the readdressing and the remeasuring on the majority of the county roads. Meanwhile, when we are, when we have been changing these anomalies to make them correct for the state, it has made a lot more errors within the county roads. When you correct some, it makes more errors. I'm sorry, I talk with my hands. I'm now going to let Didi come forward and show you some of the situations that we have come across within the county and within the city, and maybe that, the presentation that she is going to show you is from the state OIR-GIS department. Didi.
I'm more nervous than she is. My name is Didi Perry, I do the mapping. I'm the geek of the bunch, and I'm going to try to explain what it is we're doing in a way that's easy to understand, because just like a lot of your jobs, I don't know what you do, and it'd be hard for you to explain it to me in five minutes. It's going to be hard for me to explain what I do in five minutes, too. It makes sense to me, but not to everybody else. First, I'm going to start with what the state has given us. We're finding problems on these roads, there's anomalies, as Kathy stated. Some of those can be easily corrected, some of them can't. Some of them have to be corrected by address change, some of them can be done just by moving numbers around a little bit. But what we found, once we started clearing these roads and we took care of everything the state asked us to do, there were a lot more errors on these roads than we ever thought were there, not just in this spot here, but in this spot, and this spot, and this spot. I pulled up a road today, was showing it to Sheriff Holt, Kenny's Road, I took a small section of it, just in that small section, just scanning through, I found five different sections where numbers were low numbers in high sections, high numbers in low sections, odd and even. This is going to make it very difficult to find things, if you're going down the road. That's where this little presentation from the state came in, I think everybody has a copy of it. Basically, it says, how long do you want to wait? A question was posed in a 911 Board meeting, how long, will an ambulance come to mean an emergency, or a police car, or a fire truck? Will they get there? Yes. How long will it take? Different question. As fast as we can possibly get there, but if the addresses are wrong, the numbering is wrong, the addresses aren't posted, you're taking time away from the time it takes them to find you. So that would be the first part. How long does it take? Okay. Looking at an address from our standpoint, finding an address on a map is very different from driving down the road and finding it. On a map, I can pull up, it's flat, I can see it in one dimension, and it's right there. If you're going down a road, whole other ballgame. I'm having to look at mailboxes that don't have numbers on them, or that aren't anywhere near the driveway, so I'm not sure which driveway corresponds to that number. Then I have addresses that are incorrect, so then I'm fighting, trying to figure out which of these driveways matches with this address that's incorrect, because I'm having to look at it just from sitting in a vehicle driving down the road, just like EMS does, the sheriff's department and fire departments do. Basically, what we're saying is, when seconds count, can I find you on a map? Probably. Not ours right now, but if you're on the road, it's a whole different story. They're not going to find you on the road, on some of these cases we're having. They'll find you, it's just going to take them a long time, a lot of turning around of a large equipment on small roads, and having to go and backtrack. Call takers and dispatchers may have to struggle due to these errors. That's time away from you when you need them. Okay, delays in response. Will an incorrect address impact call routing? Yes, it could delay your response, without question, particularly when there's boundaries between dispatch centers. We don't have that as much as we used to, because while we, well, we have emergency service numbers, which is different response from different people. Like you have 102, which is the city of Springfield, that tells us, or tells the dispatchers, the city will respond to everything in this area. Well, if you have a city address, a number that's wrong, and it should be ranged inside the city limits, but it's actually in the county, there's going to be a discrepancy as to who they're going to want to send. Should the county go, or should the city? Which one do you have to send out? That's an issue that's going to cause delay. Okay, how does call routing happen? When you map, there's two different ways you have to look at mapping, and this is where the geek stuff starts, but I couldn't answer Friday when someone asked me, because I was kind of taken a little off guard, just trying to explain something a bit more complicated. Mapping is done by either vector or raster. Big words, simple things. Raster is your aerial, that's what you see. When you look at Google Earth, that's a raster map, it's a picture. Vertex mapping, or vector mapping, excuse me, is lines, points, and polygons. Now, lines and points are simple, it's a dot and a line. Polygon is an area, where you cordon off a certain area. We use all three, in order to do what we do. We use lines for the center line of the road, the highway department uses those as well. We use points for addresses. Each one of those points contains information that will describe the house, the address, the emergency service response, everything that we need to know before we send somebody there about that structure, we have in that attribute information. That's part of your vector data. What happens is, with Next Generation 911, your MSAG becomes your street line. That's the range that's on that street line. Your ESN, emergency service numbers, are part of your points. So there's where you have your tie between your vector data, your dots and your lines. If your address is wrong and it fails, if it falls in the wrong MSAG range, your call will be misrouted. They could send you farther down the road than you actually are. We are seeing that right now. We are seeing, have seen calls that have actually, once we've cleaned the range of the road up and tightened it up to where it should be, because there's some, when it was initially done by Austin P., they had the range a little farther out. No problem, it's an easy fix, we'll bring it in. Then when we sat down and did that, we made sure all the information and the street lines and the addresses matched up, and then the state gave us this awesome thing called an anomaly shape file, that we added to this, and once we put that on, it changed everything. It took lines and pointed them from where that 911 call would show up on the road. Sorry. We had a call, or several, more than one, that if a 911 call came in, it wasn't going to come in five feet from your house, or five feet from your driveway, it was going to come in a half a mile away from your driveway. That means you have an ambulance crew, or a police car, or a fire truck, going up and down this road trying to figure out where you are, because if that call pointed to the road, it was not going to show up anywhere near you. Can it happen with Google? Yeah, it can. Now, I'm going to hold this up, and I'll get back to Google in a minute. Can it really matter? Now, if you look at this and you scan it really fast, you're probably not going to see an error in it, because the first time they handed it to me, I kind of just buzzed through, and I was like, yeah, this is a normal picture. And then I realized it really wasn't. As you go up through all these, now this is the normal picture. This is how numbering lays out. You start at a lower end, go to the higher end of the road, odd on one side, even on the other. If you've ever been down a road, you generally pretend to notice that. Okay, then we take this, and this is kind of what we see every day, on this second sheet. If you start at the top in the orange area, you have eight across from 15, seven across from five, four across from nine, two across from three, and one across from 53. Does anybody find a problem with that? Because we see that problem. You have odds on the even side of the road, numbers that are out of line. And this is how it shows up in our system, this is what we see. Okay, second delay in response. Can I find my house on Google? If they can find my address, why can't you? Dispatchers can find you, but they can dispatch clear instructions, especially, can they dispatch clear instructions on how to get to one of these mistakes, when they're talking to a caller on the phone that's screaming? Do they need to take the time to dispatch out errors, or how to get around errors when they're trying to give instructions on how to do CPR? Which one becomes the most important? Okay, do you want a dispatcher to have to tell you to wait? I can't give you any more CPR instructions, because I have to tell her how to get from five to seven, because seven, in this case, came before five. It's not how it should work, but you found me on the map. GIS is highly intelligent, for its own situation. It can handle different addressing situations. All we're asking it to do is handle what's actually there right now, and what's there right now is a big mess. Even if the addresses are out of the norm, can it handle it? Yeah, but you're still going to have a problem on the ground. Dispatchers providing these directions can become difficult, first responders trying to find these addresses can become difficult. And there's another situation on this page. Does it matter? Well, if I have a dispatcher who's trying to tell somebody, it's the fourth house up on the left, which house are they going to start with? This house, or this house? They're corner lots, which one's which? Do they count from here up, or do they count from the wrong house up? All of these little things create bigger problems. Okay, can I find, I can find my house on a Garmin. If they can find it, why can't you? Emergency vehicle will be able to find you easily. Will they? If they have to ask direction, should they really have to stop in the middle of running down a road and ask, does this come before five, or after seven, or after nine? Should they have to stop and turn around because the numbers are wrong? And basically put, not everybody gets to ride in an ambulance and a fire truck and a police car with the lights and sirens on flying down the street. They've got a lot on their mind, and it's more than just a number on the side of your house. It's daylight, you see the numbers, everything is nice and clear. If there's a mistake, if the numbers are on the box, which we tend to have problems with that here, they might be able to find it, but then we're going to add a distraction. We're going to add people walking in the street, and cars pulling out of driveways. That's a distraction from them trying to look down at these numbers. Then we're going to add nighttime. You might find it, it's going to take you longer to see it, because you're going to have to get up closer to it to find it. Then you're going to add nighttime with distractions, headlights from oncoming cars. And as you teenagers know, HIDs will blind you, you won't be able to see anything. Not to mention the occasional wildlife that tends to run out in front of vehicles around here that you're having to watch for, as you're going down these roads as fast as you can to get to the person that needs help. Okay, well, an incorrect address always causes a problem with emergency response. No, but are you willing to take that chance? Is a number worth your life? What we did is, we sat down and looked at these, we found mistakes that were made eons ago, back when 911 first started. There was no tool to help measure, there was just, the technology was not available. Now that we have this mapping and we can see down on top of it, we can see it from two different ways. We can see it from the road, and we can see it from the top. Looking at it from the road, it's a little hard to tell. We have people that have taken mailboxes with them, they think their mailbox is a social security number. So when they got that number 20 years ago, they picked up that mailbox and took it to their next house, and that became their address. And we've had to catch a lot, and we've had to explain a lot. They're laughing, it's true, it happens every day. We have numbers that were, because numbers weren't posted as people went on, there were errors around it when addressing continued. We have some builders or residents that have built property, built on their property, and said, this is where my driveway is, because that's how we address. We address to your drive, the access to your property for an emergency vehicle. We put the, we address to that point in the driveway. Well, then we'd have a resident who said, you know, I don't like my driveway on this side, let's put it over here. So they'd move their driveway. Well, when that's numbered, it's numbered in conjunction with the numbers around it. Once that driveway's moved, your address changes. My house is a really good example, because I noticed it in this process. I thought I was pretty good. I found out I was wrong. My house actually comes before 1308, I am 3413. My driveway was moved after the building of my house started. I bought my house after it was done, so I didn't realize that until later. But it happens everywhere. We have seen several cases where these numbers are very out of line, beyond what the state wants. Our numbers are messed up, and we have a chance to correct them now, and I wish there was a gray area. That's what Kathy and I talked about, there's got to be a gray area, but unfortunately, there's not. It's pretty black and white. So that's pretty much all I have to say. Are there any questions? Yes?
Mr. Jones?
A question, one that I've been posed several times. I know, think I know the answer, but I want you to answer it publicly. Do these changes occur inside the municipalities of the Robertson County, inside city limits of Springfield, or only in the county?
They need to occur everywhere.
Everywhere?
Yes.
Every street inside Springfield, every street inside Cedar Hill?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner McAfee?
We cannot change a street name.
In 1996, the majority of the county roads that were duplicate names were renamed, they either put north or south. We have an issue in Cooper Town city limits right now with Mr., what's the lady's name? Charles?
Mayor Charles.
He has called us concerning Hickory Drive, which is in that subdivision, and we also have a Hickory Drive here in Springfield, which also have, they both have Springfield mailing, but they only have different numbers. But it's still an issue. When Nashville sorts that mail, they put it all together, because it's Hickory Drive, Hickory Drive, whether the numbers are, you know, are different or not. So that probably will be a correction, yes. Anything that's duplicate will be corrected in the process.
Mr. De Oriya?
Who does the addressing for the entire county?
We do the addressing for the entire county, except for, we started doing it for the city of White House years ago, because the city planning department took over their city limits. We do, we do work with them on doing it, because we were the ones who originally done it.
I guess I'm a little confused. When I do addressing, I go 50 feet, for every 50 feet of street frontage, road frontage. Now, is this going to change with the new system?
Yes.
Yes, it will go to 5.28 feet.
So is that going to create four times as many, or five times as many addresses for the same 50 feet?
What it'll do, basically, when you break it down at 5.28 feet, you're doing 1,000 numbers per mile. So for every shift of 1,000 numbers, you're a mile down the road. But what it does is, it actually allows us, as far as the map, it does create more numbers on the road, so on cities where these numbers are stacked, one on top of the other, it will actually open these up a little bit, for apartments, or if there's development behind them. In our case, it allows for the map to be tightened up. It allows for these driveways we bought in a little bit tighter than one way or the other.
So the 5 feet was more for cities than the county?
5.28 feet was a NINA standard.
Plus the standard.
And a lot of places around the country use that standard of mapping, or as far as numbering. We did not. Makes a lot more sense now that we do use it.
Are we going to be the first county to do this?
To use 5.28 feet? No, there are other counties that have already implemented 5.28 feet.
Will this include all 95 counties?
Ben, I'm not sure. It should be, yes, sir, it should, because every, according to this mapping to be the same, and because there's so many properties that were grandfathered between Chatham and Robertson, Montgomery, Robertson, Sumner, you know, all your outer lining, boundaries, we all have to be on the same level in order for this to all work with the state OIR department.
A lot of counties have done this way before we did. Chatham County had done this years ago, and did it over a process of years.
Well, they did it like the last two or three years.
Commissioner Eaton?
A few minutes ago, you mentioned duplicate names, and you said, that's how they sort the mail in Nashville, that we got together. My question is, and what I thought when I read the article, how does the United States Post Office play into every address changing in the county? Have we talked to them?
Yes, sir. We have spoke with Nashville, and the guy also that works at Nashville works in Chattanooga and Knoxville, and he said, he wanted us to do the whole entire county and just bring him the whole lump sum, and I said, no, sir. I mean, you're looking at several, you're looking at a while to get the whole entire county readdressed and redone. So we, when I spoke with him the last time, we were doing it just as we do the roads. We started alphabetically, A through Z, whether it be city, Cedar Hill, rural, wherever, however our MSAG, it's alphabetical, and we started with the As and went on. And we've done already 50 roads.
And that was the part in the article that we all read, that said some of it had already been done?
Yes, sir.
And did those folks agree to it okay?
Well, we had.
They complain?
No, sir, I think our biggest road, and when we first started numbering, was Armstrong Road. We had several of the residents that attended one of our 911 Board meetings, and the state ECB was there and made, which is Tennessee Emergency Communications Board, that's who we have to work under. They came and made this presentation, and there were several of them that were still adamant about not changing.
For the most part of these roads, there are some that get upset. Don't get me wrong, I don't want to change my address either, but it's necessary. A lot of these people want, they're angry at first, and once they start to ask why, and we can explain it to them, then they kind of understand a little bit better, and they're okay. I mean, it's an inconvenience, don't get me wrong, we understand this. Now, this is not something we just decided to do.
I don't understand, all of a sudden, we get a notice in the paper, all county addresses to change. I have had more calls, more people in person to ask me about this. Why haven't we been notified about this? And how can a nine-member board, appointed by the County Commission, the paper says the nine-member E911 Board established by the County Commission, established by the County Commission, approved the readdressing at a meeting in April, after request was made by Rob County 911 Addressing Office. How come the County Commission doesn't have to approve this for our constituents out here? I mean, I've had them come to me and ask me, why didn't we know about it? I said, I didn't even know about it myself.
Well, when we started doing this in April, we did not even think that it was going to consist of all this changing. We just thought it was going to be within this mapping system, and we go from there. But when they sent us all these anomalies and these errors, this is when we saw that the corrections needed to be made.
But Kathy, has 911, has the emergency units had that much trouble over the last five, six, seven, eight, 10 years of finding someone to address?
Well, we got two emergency services here.
Armstrong Road's been pretty bad, which I change the story in our side of our city, Lassie Lane. Lassie Lane changed the numbers. We had one person complain about that. They've got all the numbers changed. Level Road has changed just about all their numbers. One of our commissioners did one of them.
Hadn't been a major issue though, eh?
But Armstrong Road was a real problem.
Finding these addresses hasn't been an issue. Finding these addresses hasn't been an issue.
Out in the county especially.
But as far as the 911 board, this was discussed at the 911 board when the state came to make this presentation. I mean, our 911 board didn't make the decision to go ahead and change all these. We did in the office. When we saw the anomalies and the errors that were there, we've always, I've been there 24 years, that's what we've done. We've changed addresses every day. We've changed addresses where an even number was on the odd side, an odd number on the even side. And I know this is a major undertaking. I mean, you know, a major, major undertaking.
Commissioner McAfee?
The 911 board are going to be responsible for changing every one of the deeds.
The deeds are the only thing, your only legal identification to your property is your map and your parcel. An address is just an address. Most deeds have a physical address on them, or, or say for instance, a tax card. They have a physical address on them, and they have a mailing address on them. But that only legal identification to your property is your map and your parcel.
When I bought my house, the builder put driveway in a different place than what, when I purchased the property, it had one number. And the driveway, builder told us with the driveway in a different place, and we were told we had to change our number. And we had to go through, and we had to have the deed redone, we had to have the mortgage redone, we had to have everything redone, essentially.
That's the only thing I do not know the pricing of, to change a deed. I mean, that's, I mean, you don't...
Mr. Jackson?
In response to Mr. Eaton's question concerning the post office, I'm reading your memo. It says, "The postal service will forward your mail for one year."
Yes, sir.
Do they agree to that?
Yes, sir.
That is a lot longer time than, than they usually do when you move. Do they agree to one year?
Mr. Jackson, then Commissioner Ray.
You was talking about Armstrong Road. We had a lot of problems with numbers out there. They would go from 3,900 blocks up to 41, and then they would drop back down to, to 3,800 blocks. Because they went in their own houses behind original houses. We had quite a bit of trouble on Armstrong.
Mr. Ray?
Is this something that the state made us do, or is this something your office, the state came and talked to you about, and you said, "Well, I'm gonna do it"?
The only thing that we are having to comply with the state is the mapping system itself, and correcting these anomalies. That's what the state ORR has required us to do.
For all this you're doing, you don't have to do, you don't have to be done. You're taking it upon yourself to do this.
If there are errors on the road, basically what we're saying is if there's errors on the road beyond what the state is asking us to correct, that they need to be addressed. These need to be fixed. And if they're not fixed, you're saying it's perfectly okay to have numbers out of line and on offense and into the road? The state is not requiring us to, to fix. They're requiring us to fix all of our mistakes that they see. But they are not picking up every mistake on these roads. They're asking for those other mistakes to be fixed.
That's, that's what I'm saying. Your office, your office is doing a lot of this without, without the state requiring it to be done.
Right.
You're, you're doing a lot of it.
Right.
On your own, that, that the state is not requiring.
Because we see, we see the errors, and our dispatchers are that first person that gets that call.
But people have been dispatching for years, for several years, and they haven't had all this problem. Y'all, y'all are the ones that are saying all these problems right there. I haven't been hearing all this from, from, from the dispatcher, from, from them. I haven't been hearing all this.
When we are...
This is coming from your office.
Right. When we're correcting the anomalies, that leaves more, that, that, there's more underlying issues.
Everybody is gonna have to have their driver's license changed, their, everything is gonna be changed, all the businesses is gonna have to have all their paperwork, all their envelopes, everything that they do. Y'all are requiring them to do all that, and the state is not requiring that. You're doing it.
No, because we are the addressing office, and we want it, we want it 99 or 100% accurate for that dispatcher.
Commissioner Duggar, and then Commissioner Wilson.
I wanted to know, who has the legal right to change addresses?
The county appointed the 911 Addressing Office to do that.
I mean, by resolution? I mean, I've got the, uh...
I mean, it was established. We've been doing it since 19, I mean, I've been there since 1989.
I'm looking, I'm looking at the TC, TCA code that says that the cities have the right to do theirs, and the county is done by the legislative body, which would be us.
But when I came to work for the 911 district in 1989, the district was doing it...
I'm asking you if it was, if it's, it was legal, then this may be a, a question for Mr. Richard, but, you know, according, you may have been doing it, I'm not arguing whether or not you have or not, but what I wanna know is if that has been, been done legally that way.
We were just doing what we, I mean, what we were assigned to do. I mean, that's just what we've done. I mean, I, I mean, you know...
Well, I mean, to do two or three, perhaps, maybe that's a good enough answer, but we're working with the whole county.
Yes, ma'am.
And we're working with these cities. I mean, I, the cities have had no input. The cities had no idea this was going on.
We mailed them a letter July the 3rd to every individual city, and we've heard back from Springfield, we've heard from Cedar Hill, we've heard from Adams. I did receive a letter today by fax from the city of Greenbrier, and we haven't heard from Cross Plains, you know, y'all these.
I had not heard from Cross Plains. Adams, I'd been in contact with several times. I spoke to the city of Cedar Hill, I spoke to White House, spoke to Greenbrier.
But I would think that this type of meeting, this type of forum, should have been conducted in each of these cities. Because people woke up Wednesday morning to the Times and read this in the paper. And I think that's a sad way to gotten this information.
Well, I'm sure the 911 board, this will be the topic of the discussion tomorrow at 9 o'clock's meeting in the morning, um, you know, from whatever the commission decides, however they choose to, I mean, you know...
Well, I think we need a legal interpretation of whether or not this is even being done correctly.
I don't think there's ever been an actual policy that's been set up, applied, before, when I first came on board, it was, the attorney was Mike Mann from Chattanooga. And I don't think there's ever actually been a policy that has been established, the 911, I mean, the 911 district's addressing office has always done it. There's never actually been a policy stating what we do, you know, in our office, exactly.
Well, there is one though, for the state.
I just wanna know, is there any way we can just speak to ones that's wrong without pitching the whole county? And they say, well, how much it's gonna cost the county, and how much would it cost each individual to get everything checked?
Okay. First question, can we fix some and not fix others?
No.
No, not really. Sometimes you can. Sometimes you can. But for the most part, there are a lot of set cases where you fix some, put them where they're supposed to be, and you land on top of another house. Or you have to move houses. There's a lot of roads. Armstrong was one of them. Once you changed one, then you had to change this one, and then this one, and then move this over. It felt like dominoes.
Commissioner Doris?
Y'all have to change every mailbox, or number of every, so everybody, one in Armstrong, the other in Armstrong, got to change? Now, whose responsibility is, who's, who's expenses to go down through, now, we was talking about safety a lot ago. And the reason we have trouble finding them a lot of times is because they don't have the numbers on there now. So who's gonna make sure, if you go moving these numbers around, we sure ain't gonna find them, to be honest with you?
Well, all of, of the majority, I rode the road with the postmaster from Springfield about a month ago, and there's like 20 residents that have not actually changed the numbers on their mailbox, out of 110.
You know, what I do, guess which one to be calling 911?
Exactly.
Oh, that was on Armstrong Road, you're talking about Ms. Kathy?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Baggett?
We were getting two different opinions from these two ladies here, and questions last while ago. Could we...
You can't correct the anomalies. We can correct the anomalies, but it's like she said, and we, and, and, and if, that's what, even if our 911 board decides to do that, I mean...
That can be done though, if you're saying.
Oh, yeah.
Commissioner Haley?
Well, if, to Ms. Kathy's point, if, if you correct anomalies, could that cause there to be other anomalies?
Yes, sir.
That's, I wanted you to bear in mind.
Yes, sir. When you correct these anomalies, it's making more errors.
Mr. McAfee?
So I guess the, the question is, if you correct anomalies and it creates other anomalies, are the, the state gonna come back later and say, "Well, you not, not only did you correct these anomalies, but not..."
Just say errors.
Very likely too.
Well, it's better to do it all now, rather than, you say, keep coming back and saying, "Well, now you have to fix, and now you have to fix that, and now you have to fix that."
Right. They can hand me sheet after sheet after sheet in their programs to fix. I can fix some things, and I've watched them turn right around and create more. There are roads, like I said, that I have fixed. I have done everything they've asked me to do. It's cleared their errors, but then we look at the road from driveway to driveway, and we still have problems. We still have high-low issues. Because we're asking it to see it in a real basic term. We're asking it to look at it from a 911 standpoint, where the more it's lined up, the better it's lined up, the easier it is to respond to.
Mr. Brown?
What you just said, when was the Armstrong Road changed?
It's in April of this year.
So in six months, we've built a 28% error rate on the box. And then have we followed up and mailed each one of these people mailboxes to, to change those mailboxes?
We've got cars in, yes, we have.
Okay. Because it seems to me that the anomalies are created on the road itself. Obviously, if we do one road, it doesn't necessarily affect another road. It could, if it's a corner, but generally speaking, it would. So, it seems to me that's pretty sweeping, and if you have a, call it an 18% error rate on one road, then if we do the whole county, you might have several, several years of problems with mailboxes, which may be created. I understand doing this, and logically, I think the numbering system is good, from what I'm hearing. I have a very significant concern right now, not that the, the technology isn't there to do it, but I have a feeling implementation at this scale may not achieve what you want in the short term. It may be quite a long time before it actually achieves that from a practical application, where I can understand doing one road, getting it corrected, making sure all the mailboxes are done, then moving to a next road and crack in it over some years. But it seems to me, I'm hearing that we wanna do and eat the elephant all at once, instead of one bite at a time. That's kind of what I'm hearing.
Well, we've actually started with the As, and we all, we get new constructions. People building houses, well, we've had to, had to stop that process, do that new, address, pinpoint that new construction, and do that road at that time. Because we don't wanna have people changing it two or three different times. I mean, you know. And then that has broken up the process of the A through Z. But depending upon, I guess, what all these, because we're having to do these anomalies right now, to meet that deadline by March of 2013.
Commissioner Spears, then Commissioner Garner.
That, that was, exactly. Kathy just answered my question. Is the state not giving you some kind of a deadline as to fix the, and when you go back and say that, when you fix one error, it creates maybe three other errors down the road further on down? And they're saying, "Well, let's do this as well, as we're fixing this." But there is a time limit that they are saying. And this time limit is very short, and they're not saying years. I think my email read, they wanted it according to the one that I got to both of you all. It was in March, was it not? That they were wanting it, everything taken care of. And when they came, when the state came out to the 911 board and made the presentation and said this is what they're, before they go on to their new online system, which is what the whole purpose of this is, is it not? That all dispatchers will be on this new online system that they are working toward, to get the errors out? But when they said that, there is not anything in there that said years with it. I got an email just the other day that said, "If this was not taken care of by March, what's the problem here?"
Commissioner Garner?
I think, I, I understand the errors, and I understand that errors in trying to fix could create future errors, but I'm thinking of a street that's not gonna affect or even businesses in a well-developed area. Is the, help me here, because I think, is it the, the new system going from 50 feet to 5.28 feet? Is that what's creating the need to...
Well, in a lot of your city streets, we've got, there's no, there's no access for any new renumbering for anything within the street. And it's the same as for Greenbrier City. On West College Street, you've got a lot that has a house. I mean, they could put a garage apartment. All subdivisions restrictions are different. I mean, you know, they could make a garage into an apartment, and we would have to put a separate address on that for that dwelling. A basement could be an apartment. We would have to put a separate address on that.
And we've seen it in several of the cities where the numbers stack up. It's, there's no open number in between. You have 113, 115, a vacant lot, 117. Well, if they build here in this vacant lot, then what are we gonna do?
That's what we're trying to cut out, is all the A's, because Nashville Post Offices tell us they want to do away with that. I mean, if, you know, and then there's a lot of things here, like, um, short Chatham, there's a 127 and a half. You can't, I mean, that's not, you know, we're trying to correct it all. And it may not take, it may take, it's, it's more than likely it is gonna take us at least...
About two years.
Yeah.
Hello?
About two years, I would say.
Mr. Gregory?
I think we get the impression tonight from all the comments that we made, that all the citizens felt negatively about this. And I would just like to say, I have had phone calls, I've talked to people up the street, and the comments that I'm hearing are very positive. They think that it's good to do whatever we need to do, so that...
Commissioner Haley?
Um, I'm still torn over what my feelings are, but I can give you a real-life experience. My grandmother had a stroke, and the first responders drove by, her trailer, and I had to run down the road after them. I'll just leave it at that.
Well, let me, I know y'all cannot see this, but Mr. Tommy Baggett had called me a few weeks ago concerning a situation in Arabian Lane. I know you can't see it, I'm sorry.
Yes.
But there is a whole section out there in Oakland Farms that has, does not even have any addresses.
That's correct.
The second section, you can't even get to, unless you go down another street, whether you go down Philly Lane, or Gallup, or...
Filipino, Filipino?
Palomino.
Palomino. It's Palomino, yes.
Filipino. And this is, it's a whole section here, where we addressed the, the plant for the lots, but the developer did not develop it. And I can't remember, Mr. Tommy, if that person, it was a heart attack, it was a medical call. And he called me about it and said, "We have got to get this problem solved." And I said, "Yes, sir."
I know exactly where you're coming out.
Commissioner Vogel?
Ms. Vogel?
Yes, sir.
I see in the cities where you have got a problem, and the air's gotta be fixed, I think you need to fix your air. But I didn't rule areas where I can't even see a house, from my eyes, why would you change those?
For future development.
For future development?
Who knows what's gonna be out there when we're dead and gone?
They put this on the belters, they wanna call somebody.
They wanna...
They're not meaning we have a problem if we're to sit here about the development, you know?
If you don't make this by the 2013, what is the state gonna do?
Oh, we'll have the anomalies done.
But I mean, what is, what is the, what is the, now here, the chair is saying, they're not giving us much time, but what is going to happen if we don't have it done? Or not, or not, don't meet their deadline?
Then they'll just extend our time.
Commissioner Jackson.
There are going to be counties, there are going to be counties and districts that will not get it all completed.
Commissioner Jackson, then Commissioner Eden.
No, I'm saying, if y'all change it, yeah.
No, not yet, sir. Thing is, by 20, by March 2013, I can go through and clear, if, good Lord willing, I clear everything they have. I can take every mark, star, which is my little symbol for the problems we have, any of those. If I can clear every single one of those off the map and go down each road, I can still find problems. It's what they identify, they are worried about certain problems. We have to see the road as a whole and the county as a whole. You know, we didn't wake up one day and decide this would just be a really cool thing to do, to just inconvenience everybody and change everybody's life. Nobody likes change but babies and butterflies. It's necessary.
Commissioner Eden.
This is direction to all three of you, including you, Mayor Bradley. Do all 95 counties in Tennessee have this mandate?
I can't answer that, Commissioner Eden. I don't know the answer to that.
Yes, yes.
They are asked to have a mapping system that is 98% accurate on the street center lines and address points by March 2013 of their, what they deem as errors.
If, if it's not done by that date, are these counties eligible in case of Amber Stone? Get somebody else out.
That's our concern.
Yeah.
Now, we see there's a problem, and we, now that we can actually look down on top of this and see that there's an issue, do we clear up what the state says and let the rest of the mistakes that are on these roads go, or do we say, okay, well, we have seen that? We can't do that.
Commissioner McAfee.
I noticed that a lot of the cities, they have a lot of, they have put on the curves to the right end of the number of the号码. Because that's something that would be impossible in our county to build at 18% if you could not change the numbers of the mailboxes to, to put the number out front of their house so that once the address is changed, you know, you'll know where that person is.
No, you don't have, you don't have curbs out in the county. That would be, but, well, that's, I mean, the district cannot pay for numbers, the state has, we cannot buy any numbers for residents. We've asked about that because we were willing to do that, but we are not allowed to buy, you know, buy materials for, you know, to do that. Well, I'll just use this instance. I already changed Roger Blackwood, and his was done in Slate.
Commissioner Ray.
And he was in my office, and he was, he understood exactly why we were needing to do it.
Commissioner Ray.
Mr. Wilson asked a question, I don't know how to answer it. How much, one of them was, how much does this bill cost? Yeah, I need you to be, what do you want me to know?
Every, every, every resident is different. I mean, you know, I have a little old mailbox with a 1999 sign from Springfield Printing.
I got a brick mailbox.
Up under my mailbox. Every situation is going to be different.
Commissioner Farmer.
What do you do if your street begins in the city and runs up to the county?
We do have that issue on Kenny's Road, New Chapel Road, there's several, where it starts as a three-digit number, and then all of a sudden, it's this really high number that goes all the way out to a low number in the county. It would have to be changed to one fluid number all the way through it.
I don't know what the numbers are in the city, but where the city starts, there's only, there's a lot of vacant lots, there's two hours on the camera, three hours on camera before you get to the end of it. It's more than that way down the road, but it's so many acres between the hour.
Five foot.
Well, actually, what is, we don't put an address on it. There's no address put on it until there's a driveway there.
Commissioner DeOrio.
I see a lot of opportunity, but I also see a lot of problems. I think we could be here all night asking questions. We need to have better communications. All of us were hit. I don't know many of us in this room knew before the paper came out, and I think it's going to take more coordination because all of our roads don't end at the county line. So we're going to have to contend with dealing with Sumner County, Cheatham County, Davidson County. This mandate, I don't see how we can do it and do it well. Like Commissioner Brown said, if we've got 18%, we're going to have to have a better plan. And if that means going one street at a time, then that would be a better plan in my mind.
Yep, and that's what we're doing. That's what our plan, a lot of people think we're just going to change every number tomorrow, send out letters, and that's the way it's going to be. That's not how it's going to be. The errors that we're changing with the state, that's on us. We fix those, we sit down, we look at this computer and figure out where the mistakes are. Is it a computer error? Is it a human error? Is it an error? I can fix any of them if I have to or need to, or depending on how the problem occurs. But when we found these roads that had errors, we didn't just go, okay, this whole string had them, it was one road. We measured this road, cleaned up any errors we saw on that road, addressed the hydrants on this road, did everything that we can fix if we want online, sorry, address them that concern. And then every resident on that road was called. It had a landline phone, because that's the only records we get. If it's a landline phone, we can get a hold of them. They're notified or a message is left. Once that's done, then a letter's sent explaining to them, this was your old address, this is your new address, and there's been some confusion, so I'm going to spell it out. This is the letter that we send out to everybody. It is 30 days to change the numbers on your mailbox and notify the post office. We're not telling you every address you have has to be done in 30 days. It's the numbers on the box and start notifying the post office, starting your change of address. The post office says you have one year. Now, what we've been telling people as they've called in about concerning, you know, they want to ask questions, we tell them, go ahead now. We don't know when we're going to start your road specifically. We had a lady today from Forest Chapel Road, but when are you going to do my road? Well, ma'am, I can't tell you. I said, we can find a way to notify the residents as we get closer, but at this point, we're still kind of taking baby steps. We're in the very beginning, we've only done a few roads that needed new addresses put on. But as far as the alphabetical part, we had to stop for the new building. We had a building group. A lot of people building on family land this summer. But I told her, I said, right now would be the perfect time for you as a resident to go ahead and start making a list. Cards I have to send, correspondence I have to send, what bills do I have to go out? It was something I only do once or twice a year that I wouldn't normally think about. You know, these are things you have to kind of, I said, go ahead now and start making this list so you're prepared when the time comes. That way, you're a step ahead. And I said, then when that 30 days is up, then go ahead. Once you get that call and that letter, 30 days and the date's on the letter, put your numbers on your mailbox, go ahead and do your change of address. So it's taking one road at a time and doing this process with it. It's not jumping and doing 20 roads and saying, okay, we're going to call all these 20 people and there you go.
Commissioner Duggar.
Well, I'm just still concerned about the legality of it because I look at this Tennessee code, and it says unless these cities have delegated authority, then the county doesn't have the authority to do it.
They have delegated, if they're not doing the addressing.
Pardon?
I think they have delegated if they're not doing their own addressing.
Well, they've never have done it to this. It says unless it's delegated, that this body does the, and it's the cities that do it.
I think it was delegated when they formed the 9-1-1 and established the system.
Exactly. It was, but that would, that would only be as the county, only, only the county could have delegated.
There's nobody in the Robertson County except for the City of White House that can change a number unless Kathy does. Nobody else, Greenbrier City, nobody else can change any address. It has to come through her office.
Well, I'm not saying it doesn't have to come through her office, but I'm just saying the code says unless that city delegates it.
That's what I'm saying. I think when the 9-1-1 was established, everybody was in agreement that this is where your addressing system's coming from.
Well, we may have been in agreements, but unless it's written out that way, I'm not sure that...
There'd be a lot of digging to find out.
We can find out what the agreement said. We've been in this arrangement since 1986, I think, and so we could, we can easily find out what the agreement said. I think the cities did delegate that to centralized dispatch and centralized control.
It says in this letter that y'all mail out, that you're mailing out.
Yes, sir.
Very important that the new address numbers be placed on both sides of your mailbox with numbers that leave four inches in size and also on your residence if possible. Do the individuals have to go out and buy these numbers?
Yes, sir. We cannot purchase those. They do.
Commissioner Wilson.
Do we even have, do we have a voice in the evening? I mean, what can we do about this?
I think your voice has been expressed tonight, Commissioner. I think your voice has been expressed tonight.
I know, but I mean, can we change it? Is there any way we can change it? I mean, y'all doing it. It's already said it's going to be done, so we can't stop it, so what we said you're talking about.
I would, the chair would simply make the observation that this is in the hands of the E-9-1-1 Board, that this commission has appointed, and beyond that, I couldn't speak to that. Commissioner Vogel, we're into, we're into our second hour now, by the way. I'm sorry.
I wish the 9-1-1 people would give the people in that area ample time and, and knowledge that this is fixed and have to get put in the paper every week, that that neighborhood's going to be affected. And if I haven't got a vote in this, I mean, I hate it, it's happening for my people, but I understand both sides of the story, and I'm ready to move on with our meeting.
Okay. Ladies, I appreciate you being here. Thank you very much. Next are reports. 7.1 is from Solid Waste, questions or comments? 7.2 is from Sapphire Service, questions or comments? 7.3 is from the Highway Department, questions or comments? 7.4, Veteran Service Officer, question or comments? 7.5 is Animal Control, questions or comments? 7.6 is from the Planning Commission, questions or comments? 7.7 is the Trustee Statement, questions or comments? 7.8 is the Financial Report, questions or comments? 7.9 is from Gore-McBane Public Library, questions or comments? 7.10 is from BMS, questions or comments? 7.11 is from the Inmate Expense Report, questions or comments? That's all that the chair has. What's your pleasure? Have motion by Commissioner Jones and second by Commissioner Baggett, they be accepted and ordered filed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those no, so they are approved. There are no elections and appointments, and there is no public hearing this evening, so we're ready for new resolutions. And we'll recognize Commissioner Garner for a resolution from the Highway Department.
Mr. Chairman, Madam Clerks, fellow commissioners, ladies and gentlemen in the audience, bring to your attention Resolution Number 101512080. It's a resolution establishing speed limit signs for Robertson County, Tennessee.
Is there a second to that? Second by...
Okay, do you have discussion?
If you're in favor of this resolution, vote yes and confirm. If opposed, vote no and confirm at this time. Mr. Jackson, are you still voting? There being 24 votes in favor and none opposed, that a clear resolution approved. Preliminary expense for South Springfield School, Commissioner Garner again.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Clerks, ladies and gentlemen, our fellow commissioners, ladies and gentlemen in the audience, bring to your attention Resolution Number 101512081. It's a resolution to approve preliminary expense for design, concept, and grade structure phase of new South Springfield School to be located on Bateson Boulevard.
Motion, this is a second, second by Commissioner Couts. Discussion of the resolution. Commissioner, Commissioner Ray.
What we're doing here is always giving them money. We're not giving them money right now to build a school. We don't have it. We're giving them money to go forth to check the property, see what it, you know, the... For whether, what they can build and everything like that, and what, what kind of school that they can build out there. These, we're talking about Springfield School. We have built schools and done, since I've been on this county commission, in every district, in every city, every county, school has had something done to it since I've been on this county commission. And these people, and we've done some stuff in Springfield too. But these, these kids in Springfield have the right to have a good place, to get an education as well as any place in this county. And I think we need to pass this money for this $20,000 so that they can get on with doing what they need to do.
Mr. Garner.
Kind of piggyback what fellow commissioners are saying. I had some issues with this last month when this came up, particularly with zoning. The issues I'd had that that was not vetted to an extent, and we'd had some further discussions in the committee meeting. I'll bring, you know, going to paragraph two, the second whereas, this is specifically for surveying civil engineering, geotechnical, and architectural services, and that's what the expense is going to be incurred for. When we had the resolution last month, there was discussion whether it was going to be an elementary school, or a middle school, or one or both. And the discussions that we had at the committee meeting, once we have a determination of what we are capable of doing, then the discussion will be had by the school board and then eventually us on zoning issues and what the needs are. And as someone from the, that, that sat on the Springfield Study Committee that was conducted several months ago, that's, that's paramount for me. I mean, candidly, this is in my district as well, so it's of particular interest. And as Commissioner said, we are not funding this project in its entirety by doing this. I think we're going through a very good process of having a discussion at each juncture, and hopefully, at, at the point that we're ready, or the school board thinks that we're ready to build, we'll be in a position to have an expenditure for this. But I, that's the clarification that I needed coming out of committee in the last couple of months, and that's where I am with this at this point.
Other questions or comments? Commissioner Doris.
My only question is, I'll say it again last, I did last month. They want, they're asking us for $20,000, and this is the same group of people who has a budget of their own. They came up with about, what, $300,000 to buy the groundwork last year. They can't come up with $20,000 of their own out of their budget this year. I mean, every year since I've been on the commission, they've found money left over laying here, laying there. You may not come up with your own money. I mean, why are we coming up, going to get the taxpayers when they got a budget? They come up with money every year. Why not now?
That may be a question asked, Mr. Whitlock.
Commissioner Doris, let me make an observation. And I don't get to vote in this unless 12 of you vote one way and 12 the other, but I think that this resolution is more symbolic than effectual. This resolution is coming to you at this time because we anticipate a visit from the Department of Justice. And this vote, a vote in the affirmative on the part of this commission shows that the commission has realized that we have to address this issue. You're not going to do it probably during the life of this commission because of a shortage of funds, but it, it is not the dollar amount that is significant. It is, it is the commitment that the commission is making toward addressing this inequity. And that's simply my observation. Commissioner Stubblefield.
My understanding is, and I objected against it the last time because it wasn't clear to me, it wasn't clearly explained to me what was going on. I have a little more insight into it now, I think, in what I'm understanding is that it's basically to, to look at the land to see where a building should be, be built, not necessarily whether it's going to be an elementary or a middle school, but where on that ground is a good place to build this building and, and put the footprints there. And don't, don't we do that, that same thing on every time we buy a new piece of land? So this is a piece of, of study of the land more than anything else, not whether we're going to build a school or not, but at some point, and so when we, if it's a study of the land, where is the best place on this land to build a, a building? Then that's not going to change. If we don't build a building for another 10 years, that particular study that we're funding, that we are asking for funding tonight is not going to change. Am, am I correct in that call?
Commissioner Jones, did you wish to speak?
I just wanted to point out, make a point, that the Education Committee voted five, four, and zero against in favor of this resolution.
Mr. McAfee.
Mr. Willow...
Mr. Whitlock may be able to comment more so than I, but I believe several of these aspects.
You don't want to buy this property and not be able to know that you're on it.
Well, if I may, I believe several of these aspects were explored well before the purchase, with, candidly, with all of the property being considered. This is a more refined, that will give us details of what we are capable of doing with this property.
There were topographical studies of the land before it was purchased. Any other questions or comments?
First question.
Questions being called for. If you're in favor of this resolution, vote yes and confirm. If you're opposed, vote no and confirm at this time. There being 19 in favor, four opposed, and one abstained. I declare that resolution is approved. Recognize now Commissioner D'Orio for county participation in Emergency Communications Committee E-911. Commissioner D'Orio.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Clerk, fellow commissioners and audience, I have Resolution 101512082. It's a resolution to approve county participation in Emergency Communications Dispatch Study Committee.
Have a motion, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Eden, Commissioner D'Orio.
This is just saying that there are problems with, from what I'm understanding, there are problems with the dispatch that we need to all get together for the betterment of 911, betterment of all of our citizens, and work out, work a deal that we can all live with. And if I paraphrase that too simply.
The Chair will entertain a motion to make the county attorney a member to, since this is his work, that he can probably explain more detail. I have that motion by Commissioner Haley and second by Commissioner Gray. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. So, Mr. Richard, if you'll come up, we'll give you a chance to explain the details of this resolution, please.
Thank you, given that.
Bradley, Madam Clerk, members of the commission, members of the audience, probably no secret to any of us that there's a disagreement between us and principally the city of Springfield and possibly the city of White House about how the money for the 911 dispatch is being allocated. Springfield believes they're paying too much for what they're getting, and they passed a resolution that you're aware of at their last September meeting, basically saying they were going to withdraw from our cooperative agreement and do their own thing. The Budget Committee, and I guess the Legislative Committee, met in joint session a couple of weeks ago. There were several county commissioners there that were members of those committees, as well as other county commissioners. It was decided by that joint committee meeting that a resolution would be presented to you tonight that would be along the lines of what you've seen. And that is that this is a problem that didn't happen overnight. There are a lot of different ways to look at the issue. It's not something that'll be solved overnight. So the thought was that we'll get the county, the city of Springfield, the city of White House, those are the three groups that are in our joint 911 dispatch program. The 911 Board certainly will have a representative, and we'll all sit down and put on the table what our concerns are, and see if we can put together a better or different approach to how we're handling our dispatch. That may involve changes in funding. It may involve several different issues. I listed just some of those to give the city and you some idea of the various issues that probably need to be talked about. It's more than just one or two things. So, I'm told by City Manager, Mr. Nutting, this is on the city's agenda for tomorrow night. I feel like it'll be on Kathy's agenda for the 911 Board in the morning, and I think that it's on the city of White House agenda for this month. So, the plan is to, if you approve this resolution, then I'd also ask you, excuse me, to go ahead and designate your two members on this committee, so the committee can go ahead and get formed and start meeting towards some resolution.
Mr. Haley.
Yes, sir. A question for Clyde on, I don't know, you probably got it memorized. It's section, it's in the first agreement, Section B, or Section Five, Part B, Clyde, where it says, I'll just capitalize, "The county and the city shall each pay 50% of the net amount of the approved budget after deducting the contributions of the district and other revenues or income." It's the goal of the parties to eventually phase out the contributions of the county and city over a period of time. All right, that was the original agreement we entered into with Springfield and White House. I couldn't find, and it's probably negligence on my part, where the second agreement where White House came on board, where did we, what kind of changes were made in that section? Can you help me on that?
What I told the joint committee is that really, these documents came originally from Sheriff Bowlerger through a 911 attorney that he had in Chattanooga.
Right.
The documents were not drafted, and I followed that drafting. They weren't drafted, and they weren't approved to be like a contract that you and I would enter into. And if you walked away from my job site, I would sue you for abandoning my job. That really wasn't the way it was put together. It was a cooperative agreement, and the funding was set up when we got started, and then when White House came in, I can just tell you from listening to all the arguments, there are different ways to look at the money. And, but because it really wasn't set up as a contract to go to court over, it kind of is what it is now.
So it's a gentleman's agreement?
It's more of a gentleman's agreement, and we're at the point that, as I told the committee, I've been told that I don't want to dance with you any longer. And once I'm told that, then there's no point in me going over and saying, would you like the next dance? So, we're there. And as you know, they passed a resolution that's pretty dramatic that says they really intend to move on and get out. So, I think since the joint committee voted on this, then there's been a more conciliatory mood, as I picked up from Springfield and perhaps White House. They recognize there are a lot of things to talk about, not just money. Now, one of our issues is this emergency dispatch that the Pleasant View Volunteer Group wanted us to look at. That's another issue that probably needs to be looked at in concert with the 911 Board. So, I think when you lay out all the issues, you can see it's more than money. And frankly, the time spent in this kind of committee's work will be money well spent for the entire county.
Mr. McAfee.
Um, did we guys, there's issue, um, I'm just gonna call a hypothetical, you know, explain what kind of situation we're in. Everyone buys insurance, not everyone, they have to pay money on insurance. But they know that they have to buy that insurance to cover themselves if they should have, you know, the need for that insurance to cover them. Well, can't you look at 911 as much the same way as the, there is a potential that every single person could use it, but there are going to be a lot of people who never use it. And I think what the citizens are looking at is how much is currently used and not what potential there is for use. It does not seem like a more logical way to approach it, is what the potential is, not than, you know, what's last, what's the second one, you know, because you don't know what the future is to hold. I mean, there could be a major catastrophe, you know, a green fire that requires every person, green fire, calling 911, you know, and nobody knows what's going on that way. You see what I'm saying?
I do. And I think if you read all three of the agreements, you'll see that there was some thought at the beginning that maybe all the dispatch employees would swing over and become 911 dispatch employees. Whether that's a feasible move for everybody to make and for the 911 Board to take on that task, that's one of the issues that we'll talk about. There are just a lot of issues that frankly, all need to be discussed. This goes, in my view, beyond the money part. And I think that if, you know, in 19, 2006, I guess, there was a study done before we ever did this. And that study's very enlightening. I've given that to the cities. That's the sort of review that needs to be done now to see, here's what we've done, here's how far down the road we've come, where are we, and what's the best recommendation for us to have a good cohesive system where everybody pays their fair share. And again, it's not something you'll decide overnight, and, but I think we're on the right track with starting this.
Mr. Ray.
You mentioned Sheriff Bowlerger, it's an action that wanted started. He said, well, the people that are on the commission now weren't here when all this was going on. He, when he brought this to the county commission, he told us that this would not cost the county any more money, that it would, you know, that it was, it would be the same amount of money that we're having to spend now. After he retired, then Sheriff Hope came in as sheriff, and he decided to keep six of those people that were 911 dispatchers, he kept with a supervisor, which has costed the county $230,000 a year. So I don't know if Sheriff Bowlerger intended for all those people to go over there, or if he, if that was in the plan, or if it was in the plan for to keep six of them. So that may be where, that the city is saying we're not doing our part, is those six people that got killed in the Sheriff's Department.
And there's probably some truth to that, is what the city thinks, but the good that will come out of this cohesive approach by 911, Springfield, White House, and the county, is basically, you just start from where we are and see what needs to be done, and you don't go backwards and try to figure out what did not happen. So.
Are you ready to vote?
Question.
Question. Question's been called for. If you're in favor of this resolution, vote yes and confirm. If you're opposed, vote no and confirm at this time.
I vote yes.
There being 22 votes in favor and two opposed, I declare that resolution is adopted. Recognize now Commissioner Adcock for the final three new resolutions. Chairman of the Budget Committee, Mr. Lanny Adcock.
Mayor Bradley, fellow commissioners, ladies and gentlemen in the audience, have Resolution 101512084. It's a balanced budget amendment. It's from the Highway Department. It's some reimbursement money to FEMA. If we need to elaborate on it, I think the Highway Commissioners here.
Have a motion, is there a second? I'm sorry.
I'll do 80.
You agree with that, Commissioner Adcock?
83.
Do 83 first.
All right, we'll back up then.
Okay.
To Resolution 101512083. It's also a balanced budget amendment, and it's for the General Fund 101. Any questions on it? It's a capital outlay.
Have a motion, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Bryant. Any discussion?
Question.
Seeing none, if you're in favor of this resolution, vote yes and confirm. If you're opposed, vote no and confirm at this time. There being 24 votes in favor and none opposed, I declare that resolution approved. So the next one is 82, Madam Clerk?
84.
84. 84. Yeah.
It's the Highway Department. Resolution 101512084. It's reimbursement to FEMA. Make a motion, we approve.
Motion, second by Commissioner Bryant. Any discussion?
Question.
Question being called for. If you're in favor of that resolution, vote yes and confirm. If you're opposed, vote no and confirm at this time. There being 24 votes in favor and none opposed, I declare that resolution approved. Commissioner Adcock.
Have Resolution 101512085. This is also a balanced budget. It's a drug control fund. Make a motion, we approve.
Motion is there a second? Second by Commissioner Jackson. Any discussion?
Question.
Question being called for. If you're in favor of this resolution, vote yes and confirm. If you're opposed, vote no and confirm at this time. There being 23 votes in favor, one opposed. Declare that resolution approved.
My bad.
You wish to change your vote, Commissioner?
They're buying, Mr. Chairman.
Any old business to come before the body. Under new business, I'm going to recognize Commissioner D'Orio, Chairman of EMS.
I have Resolution 101512086. It's a resolution to declare surplus property in EMS. There are five pieces of equipment that are spent.
A second to this resolution. Mr. Baggett?
Question.
Question being called for. If you're in favor of this, please vote yes and confirm. If you're opposed, vote no and confirm at this time. Commissioner Gray, I'm going to recognize you. You want to be recognized.
Yes. I'd like to nominate two members from the county commission to be on the Communication Dispatch Study Committee. This time I'd like to nominate Mr. Lanny Adcock, Commissioner Adcock, and Commissioner James Bowler.
Is there a second to that?
Yes, sir, I see.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion?
Question.
Question.
No objection.
No objection.
Do we need a voice vote or a, or a voice vote, final? Commissioner Stubblefield.
Can't you be in this, on this committee somewhere?
Through 911. Through 911. All clear on that? Voice vote will suffice, Clerk tells me. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, so they are selected. The Clerk has reminded me about the passing of Mr. Mac Fletcher, Sr., whose funeral was today. That's Frankie's father-in-law, and we certainly want to remember, remember that family. And we'll recognize now Commissioner Gray for the election of notaries.
Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation with food, the notary for this meeting on county committee.
Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Jackson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. A motion to adjourn.
Mayor Bradley.
I'm sorry, Mr. Duggar.
I would like to remind the commission, or tell them about the veterans program that we're going to have.
Okay.
You'll have to help me on this, ensure the time it's going to be.
I'm glad you reminded me, because I didn't write it down.
Yeah, it's on courthouse steps. It will be on Monday, the 12th, rather than the 11th, because 11th is on Sunday. I believe it's at 11.
It's at 11. That's right. Thanks for reminding me of that. At the Courthouse Square, Courthouse Square, there'll be a Veterans Observance on Monday, the 12th of November, at 11:00 a.m. So hope you can join us for a brief, brief.
Early voting.
Early voting starts Wednesday. Motion to adjourn by Commissioner D'Orio and second by Mr. Brown. All those in favor say aye.